...City Commissioner, Mr. Yalberg. Pledge with the pride of the implications, followed by the pledge. Thank you Pastor Stan for being here.
You're very welcome. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you so much for this evening. Lord, we thank you for the ways that you have been watching out for, protecting, and providing for this great city that we all love. And we pray that tonight that you would guide and direct these leaders and that you would give them wisdom, fill their hearts with compassion, and fill their hearts with a love for you and the people that you've called in to serve. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Go call Madam City Clerk.
Commissioner Ersin.
Here.
Commissioner Bursadi.
Here.
Commissioner Devine.
Present.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Hatch.
Here.
City Manager Johnson.
Here.
Attorney Crawford.
Present.
First on the agenda is two sets of city commissioners meetings, but one of them had to be corrected as I was called for July 1st and July 15th. What's your question, Commissioner? And move second, they be approved as distributed. Any further comments?
Commissioner, if I could.
Yes.
I was not present at the last meeting and I do understand after listening to the recording that there were some, there was some error, a pretty big error in those meeting minutes. So first I just wanted to apologize because it was quite an error. It's amazing what just three words can do to a statement. But anyway, my office does apologize. Those errors have been corrected. And because the, at the last meeting, the minutes were approved before that error was caught, we will keep within the record the former seven minutes along with the corrected ones on top of that. And I just wanted to put that on the record that we did go back to listen to the recording to verify what was stated and make sure that it flashes.
I'll make that motion once you state anything's been corrected. I think it's already okay. All right. Thanks. All in favor say aye. Vote. Just pass. Thank you. I have a proclamation to read about Life Link. Says whereas I, organ, eye, and tissue donations provide an extraordinary opportunity to save and improve lives while offering the chance for donors to leave a lasting impact. Whereas in the state of Florida, more than 11 million individuals have already decided to leave the legacy of life by registering their decision to become organ donors through Florida's Organ and Tissue Donor Registry. Whereas just one organ, tissue, and eye donor can save the lives of up to eight individuals and improve the lives of dozens more, symbolizing an invaluable altruistic act of service that will profoundly impact each recipient, bringing a renewed quality of life and joy to them and their loved ones. And whereas the number eight symbolizes the countless lives a single donor can save while also reflecting the infinity symbol, highlighting the enduring impact and the stories that live on through organ donation. And whereas everyone, everyone has the potential to leave a lasting legacy through organ tissue and eye donation regardless of age, race, or medical history and should be applauded for their decision. Now therefore, I do request that City Mulberry Department, together with members of our city commission, to hereby proclaim August 8th, 2025 as Life Link Infinity Day in the city of Mulberry in honor of the infinite impact of organ donation and enduring legacies of selfless donors who continue to save and enrich lives and to encourage all City Mulberry residents to learn more about organ donation and consider registering if you have not as donors through Florida's Organ and Tissue Donor Registry, making a profound and lasting difference in the lives of others. So, done deal. Thank you. And I have the young man here to take this from me. Stand on your phone TV there. Can you hear for a second?
I have some time to continue.
Yes, yes. Tell us your name and first and what organization you're at today.
Hello. My name is Joseph Garcia. I am with Life Link Foundation. Thank you commissioners for recognizing August 8th as Life Link Infinity Day in Mulberry. This year marks the first anniversary of the Life Link Infinity Campaign and your support helps shine light on the power of donation and community action. The Infinity Campaign celebrates real stories from organ, eye, and tissue donors, people who made the selfless decision to say yes to donation. As I mentioned, more than 105,000 people in the United States, including over 5,600 in Florida, are currently waiting for life-saving organ transplants. And just one donor can save up to eight lives and restore sight to two people and heal more than 75 more through tissue donation. I encourage you all to visit mystorycontinues.com if you are interested in becoming a donor or wanting more information. And on behalf of Life Link Florida, thank you again for the City of Mulberry for proclaiming August 8th as a life-saving day.
Thank you, Cheryl. I said, "Thank you."
No, thank you.
Have a good day. And who's here for the library? Get up, man. Come on down.
Bethany, Bethany Picochetto, I'm sorry, library assistant. Bethany.
Yes, done.
Alright, so this is for the library for August of 2025. And my name's Bethany Picochetto. I am one of the library assistants. Very happy to be here. So I'm going to start us off with our library by the numbers. We had 3,102 patron visits this month for technology. We had 169 people use our computers for 120 hours. We had 14 tech help appointments, so those are our one-on-ones. Circulation was pretty huge. For June, we had 9,435. For July, I actually have an updated number. It was 9,531. So we're getting very close to the 10,000. So we're very excited. Programs, we had eight adult programs with 36 in attendance. Our teens and tweens, we had eight programs with 43 in attendance. Six elementary programs with 204 in attendance. Six preschool programs with 111 little friends in attendance. And we had two all-age programs where we had 15 people in attendance. So we also had our huge summer reading this year that we're very excited about. We set a reading goal every summer. If you're not aware, we do it throughout June and July. And we kind of change it up a little bit each year, but for the last couple of years, we've been challenging our friends in the community to track their reading minutes. We challenged them to 300,000 minutes this year. And the updated number as of when this was made was actually 509,700 minutes. So they surpassed our goal by 70%. And just for like a little something to think about, in 2004, so last year, they read 304,545 minutes. And four years ago, Catherine actually found a little Facebook memory that she sent me the other day, and we had read 36,172 minutes. And so we have had quite the increase in our reading. Thank you. So we've also had some really fun adult programming. If you have not tried our cookbook club, I highly recommend it. They did Honey for July, and our upcoming one is going to be Pizza. We also have some newish book clubs for us. We have a nonfiction book club that's been a lot of fun, and we also have a documentary club. Film Club is tomorrow. If anybody wants to join us over at the Gem Theater at 1:00. We're doing Prince of Tides, so there is always something going on for all ages at our library. I do want to give a shout out to Alicia and Esmeralda this summer. They spent a lot of time with our teens and tweens. These pictures that you see right here was actually like a campfire stories thing that they did with them. We also had them come in and do like all these really cool play things. They made little creatures and some pots and stuff. This was actually really fun. Some of these kids were so incredibly creative. And then Alicia also crushed it doing Friendly Feud, which was a lot of fun. And we did, it was like a whole library edition, so the kids had to answer like library-themed questions. And we had a really good time with them. But they were just so creative this summer and they kept it really interesting. We also did like an anime club where Tampa Bay Consortium, they actually gave us a Duncan Delletta gift card, so a little shout out for that sharing there as well. So we traded the kids and they did like this whole Mamba Bingo thing. And they just, they had a really great time and it's fun to see the teens and tweens come around. And then we also have tons of programs that like Cathy Anne and Esmeralda did for the younger kids. So they made their own firecrackers. This was a whole like sand castle thing they did up in the civic center. We brought in like sand and all these fun events for the kids and it was very like hands-on. And then a big shout out to Seven Wetlands. We actually invited them back again this year and this was probably one of the community's favorite things that we had. The young lady who came in brought like a taxidermy bird. She was explaining all sorts of stuff about the Seven Wetlands to the kids. She had some hands-on activities they could do as well, and they really, really, really enjoyed this one. And then Cathy Anne did these adorable birdhouses with the kids where they got to like color and put them together. A lot of them sent us pictures where they were hanging a sign already. She also, I don't think we have pictures of it in here, but she also did a orange bird theater that a lot of the families were coming back and showing them hanging in their yards. There's some more of the birdhouses. Missing Piece Theater was phenomenal. They came back to do a special Little Mermaid Storytime for us. So you can see Ursula and Sebastian here. Sebastian is actually one of our local high school students. And they were awesome. They were right down there on the floor with the kids taking pictures and everything. And I don't know who had the opportunity to go see the show, but it was fantastic. And then we of course have storytime. We love our storytime crowd. So Sarah kind of spearheads a lot of those, and then Esmeralda and Cathy Anne are helping out. And then we've been doing a lot of Saturday drop-in events. These are really fun. Esmeralda comes up with these cool ideas where they like it to make their own bookmarks and all these fun things. So it's meant to be for all ages and some of these kids are just incredibly crafty. So we have a good time with all those. And then we have a ton of things coming up for August. As you can see, we still always do like everything, all ages going on. Storytimes, we are taking just a minor break for two weeks. So those will be back the last two weeks of August. If you have questions, you can call us. And then I do want to state we have the book fair going on this week. We were very excited. The kids for those reading minutes, they were handing in bookmarks to us and trading them for what we call a Mulberry Buck. And then when they come to the book fair, we only accept Mulberry Bucks, so they get to buy their own prizes. The book fair is sponsored by the Friends of the Mulberry Library. This is the second year that we've had the opportunity to do this for them. And yesterday I had 79 people attend the book fair and today we had 70. So we have a few more days for that. If people have questions, they can certainly call or stop by. And I do want to say some of our readers are very competitive. And one of my young ladies was shopping, shopping, shopping yesterday and her mom said, "Can you just add it up first?" And it was $171. And so she started counting and she had $173. And so she, she did it and she was really proud of herself. And if you do the math on what our bookmarks are, I think she read 36,000 something minutes all on her own. So it was, yeah, it was really, it was really cool. Our big focus for August as well, and you can see through these, we are focusing on puzzles this month. So a lot of our drop-in events that we're doing for all the ages are puzzle-related. And some of the fun ones, Laura came up with a cool idea where we're going to have people try to design their own Mulberry-themed puzzle and we're going to select a winner and we are going to turn it into an actual puzzle that people can check out from our puzzle library. So the entire focus this month is puzzles and community and everybody just kind of being together at the library. That's one of our other ones, the puzzle art and puzzle community. And that's really it. And I just want to ask you guys.
Thank you. Ms. Chelsea.
City Commissioner Chelsea Young, Director of Culture and Programming. I'm just pulling up the presentation. So it's hot out there, huh? Thank you. Well, summer has been really busy and we are in our last week of summer programming. We have four museum rentals, six civic center rentals, not including library programming, and 152 participants in tours at the museum and cultural center. Some cute photos. We have closed the pool. That happened Saturday. I'll give you pool numbers next time I'm up here, but I did want to give a shout out to all of our lifeguards that work really hard and take it very seriously and are wonderful representations of Mulberry. And they make the pool season so much easier on me and other staff because they do such a good job. And a shout out to Isaiah Agarado, who has finished up his last season with us to go do a very exciting job that I can't tell you about. But he's done seven seasons with us and we're very proud of him. Magic School Bus at the Museum ended today. It was its last program today. It's been incredibly successful throughout the summer, which of course is looking at the episodes of Magic School Bus and then doing hands-on activities. Summer Swatches, Lauren has been running this, which takes arts and crafts with the Florida theme on right after Magic School Bus. Watercolor Wednesdays, which was new this summer and has been a big hit, teaches the fundamentals of watercolor. Lauren also did this one on Wednesdays, as you might imagine. Edible Science is all the fun of science plus you can eat it, which was a blast on Thursdays. And then Florida Flare has been paint along for kids that complemented the library's reading theme on Fridays. Can you dig it hours are Tuesday and Thursday and Saturday 9:30 to 10:30 before it gets, well, ideally before it gets too hot. I don't know if we beat the heat, but we try. It has been incredibly popular. Bonnie has spearheaded the picking out of prizes and both kids and adults alike. In fact, the three gentlemen you see on the left are college students who are focusing on paleontology and how to blast digging all day. We introduced a new exhibit called Departure, where you know I love to paint the walls of the cultural center, but we let the artists do it this time. So it's an immersive gallery experience. Check that out before it closes this month. It is completely a new environment when you go in. There's fashion design. There are pieces for sale. The walls themselves are part of the art. It is a departure for sure. We, every time we have a new exhibit, there is a new tour activity to complement, and Lauren came up being inspired by the fashion designs of this particular artist for the students to create their own t-shirt designs, and they had quite a bit of fun doing that. One of our favorite weeks of the year, I know everyone gets excited, is Shark Week Comes Ashore. And before we started this year, we did get a new shipment of phosphate. So thank you Mosaic and Transphos for making that happen. We did try to keep it a little bit quiet and not post about it until Shark Week happened so that we wouldn't have too many people on the dig pile before then. And on the first day, we had one Family Find 600 teeth in the afternoon. It's been a really great deposit and we have been kicking ever since then. Our annual dig contest, clearly there was not a spot left to be had on our dig pile on Tuesday morning to keep us off for the week. Some more photos. We have some return guests to compete every year. Thank you to our sheriff's office who had to help us out with traffic because we were so busy. And also we're just great fun to have out there. I hope you guys found some teeth. We also went to Magic School Bus in Summer Swatches. Went along with the theme. We created underwater habitats with Magic School Bus and shark-themed artwork. Craft Noon was another big hit where to gear up for Discoverational Shark Week the next week, you were creating art pieces and crafts and snacks that you could do at home for your viewing parties. We had charcuterie class for the adults. Thank you to Commissioner McDonald for attending, where you could make your meats and cheese board with a shark theme. That was great. Thank you to Lauren and crew for handling that. We invited the Florida Aquarium to teach us about marine megafauna, which are ocean big animals. This was for our kids and teens to experience and they did a great job. And then we had Finding Nemo at the gym, but also Trivia with a Bite at Depot, which was fun. It was hot, but it was really, really fun. We packed up the patio. Thank you to Commissioner Devine for attending and City Manager Johnson for doing very well in Trivia.
Oh, it's good.
He does. He brings in some ringers too, but they're always a formidable team for sure. It was great. Thank you to my entire staff for working hard and doing the math and picking up the questions and making sure everyone felt Mulberry hospitality on that Friday night. It was a great time. We had quite a few movies at the gym and we made it that there was an admission cost or you could donate school supplies to go to back-to-school batch. So it was nice to see the community support and also get to enjoy some air-conditioned movies. We had Independence Day, Finding Nemo with Shark Week, E.T. and Little Mermaid. And Independence Day, E.T. and Little Mermaid had two showings. Our dinner movie, as per usual, was totally sold out, which was Chicago, the Wonderful Musical. And as Bethany correctly said, Little Mermaid Jr., performed by the Missing Piece Theater Company, was absolutely incredible. I call it double sold out because there's always a few tickets that are held back and those sold out as well. The two-weekend run, it was an amazing demonstration of the local talent we have from the performers to the design to the K-Pops that were available for purchase. There was no parking to be had in the downtown area during the shows. We are going to be opening a new exhibit on August 28th. So before I see you again, Big World Little Photos, the Artistic Exploration by Sherry Ross. These are going to be a series of very small photographs, but there's going to be a ton of them, so it'll be a really cool examination of everyday objects that's seen in a different way. So we'd love to see you all on August 28th from 5 to 7. I am very excited about this. We have all of our applications for vendors for the rest of the year for our events online, but even better, you can pay for them online. So your vendor fees in this year 2025, you can pay online and they already are. Those are rolling in. So that's for the Hispanic Heritage Festival, which is on October 4th. The Harvest Festival on October 25th, the Christmas Village December 13th. Christmas Parade, you also can, I know that's not a vendor, but that's live now and you can pay your fee there as well. So thank you to Laura and who has been working with the website company on making that possible. Thank you to the finance team for working to make that possible. It has been a goal for a while and I am very excited. I know there will be some kinks in it, but it is a big step for us. So thank you. If there are any questions, that is my presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do you worry to concerned citizens of Mulberry and surrounding areas in post office spots on 134? To our mayor and to our city commissioners, our city manager, city clerk, and city attorney. The podium looks great. Everybody is here. Come on, it's here for the community. Saying that they love their city, they're here to do their duty with joy and enthusiasm. So they're all here. We're so glad to see everybody. Community report for today. Before I do that, I would like to say congratulations to the town for the life link. That is something that always is the great organization. It has saved many lives. We know the civilians right here on the city that are alive because of that same organization. So we would say thanks to that organization. Now, the month of July was an exciting and busy month with lots of community happens and events. I don't know if I thought Mulberry was a chance city and everybody's done a great job with that. But I would like to say thanks to the city for so many things. You know, that you all have provided for children, everyone, so we want to say thanks again. So let's hear that from the city. We always do a great job. Now, as I said, August is going on. The other one is here and of course, the month of July. I say concerns. Now, I know I say this, I do this all the time, and I do it with pride and meaning. We're so proud of our city, our hardware and community. And it starts with good leadership and teamwork, and that's key to the success. Be it city, be it community, be it church, be it whatever, it starts off with good leadership. And so we have that here and we're so proud of our department heads out there. I'll call the names, but you know you all did a great job. Public works, everybody does a great job to make Mulberry what it is. Mr. Johnson, the team, the commission, everybody, everybody. We would like to say bravo to you for making our city keep afloat. So let's hear from all of our members. Let me try and come up in here again. All right, you know, I have to talk about our city because this is a great city. Now, before I get into what I need to say again about the city, I'm sorry I missed the first part of the river cutting of the 143. That's Mr. Johnson's pride and joy. He has a son there. But I would like to say that the concerned citizens, they didn't send out. He did come to the second part, but we never, we met Commissioner Devine and some of the business partners. We had peace and everything, fellowship with everybody. And of course, it was busy, busy, busy. That was a great river cutting. Also, I got to meet a client with some of my neighbors, the Pouncy Twins. I told them to report when I was teaching at 3:00 in the morning. And I got to, I took a pension and I took a little bit of a piece of stuff. And I'm so proud of them and has a business here. I think they do correct. The Pouncy Twins, they have a business over there?
They don't have a business. They have product selling in the business.
Oh, okay. All right. Whatever. Yeah, that's good. All right. So we're so proud of our people. Let's hear again. Mr. Johnson, going to make a good reporter. Let's hear it. Now, school concerns. The school bells will be ringing. You know that. Monday, despite the school time, school starts August 11th. Tonight, they're already doing our school orientation. And so there's some kind of all our public schools, our chief principals. And of course, Mulberry Community Service Center and all the surrounding communities for making sure that our children will get off to a great start, a great school year with brand new backpacks filled with much-needed school supplies. The Mulberry Community Service Center, they sponsored this, this better, the Stump the Truck event. That was at all my last Saturday. Concerned citizens was there with Denise and others. I was there for two, to, I mean for 10 to four, which was Saturday and Sunday. Was Stump the Backpack. Pounce is already gone, but they're stuffing that all week and probably stuck until Saturday. And of course, the concerned citizens and more will be there helping out too. The passing out the backpack will be the back to school bash. Keep this straight, Commissioner. That's going to be from 9:00 to 11:00 to 2:00 at Mulberry High School. Right, Commissioner?
I gotta go to Facebook. I confirm that.
11 to 2.
11 to 2.
Okay. Want to make sure everybody, 11 to 2. Our kids will get their backpacks filled with all the goodies that they need. And we thank everybody for helping out our churches, our Mulberry, our city of Mulberry, churches, the schools, citizens, volunteers, all the businesses. Everybody that supports Cheryl and Jolie, all the things for the kids at time and after some important as well. So that nobody in Mulberry, nobody in Mulberry goes hungry. And not about kids, I can see the children that have gotten that wrong, but goes without a backpack. So let's hear that. Because we want our children to go to school and get a good, good start. Alright, now on our soy program. We're going to have it again. We thank. We're gonna have it again. We thank our city. Let us applaud the city for giving us confidence that we do soy again. Now, we're gonna start our soy program, let's start September, right after the big thing. So we're getting everything ready. We have our meetings, the soy committee meeting will be August 24, 6:30 to 7:30 at Studio 37. The chiefs, the students, the volunteers, August 18, 6:30 to 7:30 at Studio 37. Getting ready for the children. And also, I don't know whether you know, or not, Mr. Johnson, but you all, we have a professional, for right amongst the creation. Do y'all know that? Do y'all know that? Y'all ain't talking to me. Maybe you don't know, but I'm gonna let you know. All right, we have. So don't go, don't go to temple, make them try to find me, you got my record. And so I say around you, 2025, Commissioner Masotti, she has put together, and that's what is, I need another bag. She has put a book in, a book of the soy program and our, our energy history. And I'm just gonna show this to y'all, because later on, we got some special coming. I won't spoil it, but like, take away, you know, what you're doing. I'm just gonna do it. Because she put this together and then. And she has a book, it's hilarious. It's just, it's a lot of money. It takes two months. So we're gonna put a PowerPoint so everybody can see, okay? But it's kind of wrong. I couldn't help myself. So the two of them, America's sound up, so I'm gonna give you some accolades. Sound up, America. All right, still my name, so I have everybody else. They work together as a team, and they will be our art teachers over there. So we're so proud of them. We'll be coming back again, teaching art again with us, art and the soy. So we're just so proud and happy that we have all this going on right here in Mulberry. All right, now, as I said, the first Concerned Citizen meeting will be August 26th. It'll be at Belko, and we welcome them members. So commissioners, everybody out there who want to join us, please do, because we got a lot of work this year. We're gonna need lots and lots of members. So anybody who wants to join Concerned Citizens, we welcome you. August 26th, we signed a little early. We're gonna try to get ahead. We've got some work to go, and we've got to do. So I, I would just kind of push everybody. Usually September we start. But we having to look back again, so we could jump on it. So it's August 26th, we go get started with Concerned Citizens, okay? All right, community safety, we do like to thank, and we will always thank, the retired, already, Chancellor Hahn, let's give him a round of applause. They keep us safe. They keep the schools safe. They keep the community safe. And so we're so proud of Sonja White and her team for keeping the community safe. So citizens, this is our duty. Stop, listen, watch, and slow down, because what school is what, gonna be starting. And so we want you to obey those safety rules, you know. I think it's gonna, we got a calendar. They started that last year. You run in the bus, the bus stops, and all that stuff, and passing through the bus. And they put that sign up there, you gonna get a big ticket. So you don't want that, because we want to be safe, keep our children safe. So we are so proud of that, our chef. Hurricane season is here, so let's be ready to be prepared. Now, community events, we heard a lot, we know that a lot is coming. But also, I want to say that our hearts fought for our city, shudders, our already families, and also our parents, so part of our family too, so. Bike to school bash is Saturday, 9th, eleven to. School starts Monday, August 11. Soy, oh yeah, soy registration. Soy registration, that's for the parents out there. You will register, we got two registrations, August 28th, 6:30, 7:30 at Soy Building. And it gonna come back again September 4th, registration end of, uh, at 6:30 at the Studio 37. Now. The soy tutors. Yeah, same, yeah. Soy will start September 8th. I'm just trying to say, you can't help it, so. We're gonna be from 4th to 7th again, at Studio 37, okay? All right, and we won't meet again later that week. We come up, we won't meet that time. We, we need to be out. So this ends our report. Are there any questions? Okay, it's not, and our best, our city, our community, and citizens, and our first responders. That's how we happy back to school for the kids, thank you.
Thank you, crew. Then we have some larger business.
Thank you, Mayor. There is one on the proper business in the day as the night. This is ordinance number O R D 2025-08. An ordinance relating municipal rights and way, indicating a closing portion of that certain unopened and unscrewed alley line in Block 4 in Old City, in Mulberry, Florida. As depicted on the platte thereof, reported platte book 33, page 27, public records of Polk County, Florida. Inspector the City Manager, record this ordinance in the public records of Polk County, Florida, providing for conflict susceptibility, administrative correction descriptors errors, providing for an effective date. General location, south of Sixth Street, northeast, also known as referred to on set platters Austin Street, east of First Avenue, northeast, also known as referred to on set platters University Avenue, and west of Second Avenue, northeast, also known as referred to on set platters Nelson Avenue. This item is on the first reading plan.
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. Why can't we do the whole block? Why don't we just do a half of the block? Anybody have answers to the wrong? Is that all it was asked for?
Yeah, yeah. That's all it was asked for, and the church actually owns both sides of it. So it made it very convenient to not ask.
The evidence, okay.
To keep it simple, they've also got their permits in house, and should be starting to be, or going to shortly, I think. How many, didn't they submit everything through a cell?
Uh, civils.
Civils. So they've got all of their reviews and everything.
And that's just north of the old Code of Fortune building current. Or no, south, I'm sorry.
It's south.
Yeah.
That's across the street from where I live.
Yeah. If you see. They can, they can currently out from 37, they bought, and that's where the new sanctuary will be.
On the very right side of that picture, you see like a white roof. That's my barn.
And they needed that alley closed, because there will be some drainage of work done across the whole area.
And they don't, looking at the picture, they don't want on the left, and that goes all the way out to 37.
Yeah, and yeah, like I said, that's where the sanctuary.
Right, that's where the sanctuary. It was a pleasure, Commissioners, for a rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. Devine and Smith. Anybody in the audience wishes to speak for this? Not anyone, but the public, part of that, and we will vote. All the voters say aye. Vote is passed.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be brought back on second reading, on August 19th. Yeah, well, this is, um. Actually came up very briefly upstairs earlier. This is, um. We have our, where CRA was formed, we have, um. Our CRA charter, I guess it would be the county commission, uh, for this. We have the five elected commissioners and two local folks, civilians, the mayor being one. And actually, probably even that three as well. And then also another civilian who is Tom Mulvaney up to this point. And so Tom has requested me to be reappointed. That's why he's on the agenda, because the city commissioner reappoints, not the CRA, or the reappoints itself. So that's why this is on the agenda. And so that's why it's here, and Tom has expressed interest. So we have another four year term, so I guess we need to force Tom to opt out.
Your fourth, your third, for your time.
Yes, probably, definitely. And Tom is here every full time. There's a little. He served very equally, and all this, he's very active, and his comments and so on. Well, the mayor, I think, I think I know anybody that's here. So I'll just put that out there. Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion, please.
Motion paid by Mr. Devine. Thank you, I heard Mr. Masotti first, or Mr. Masotti first.
Mayor, my opinion is that motion concerns both Tom and you.
Yes, yeah. And since I don't hear a vote, I don't think I need to bow out.
Correct, you're not, you're there. This is not a special private Gator loss event.
I'm not voting for myself, and anyway. Anybody out there wish to speak to this?
I would just like to thank you for your faith and my continuing ability to serve.
As do I.
Thank you.
So we'll vote. All the voters say aye. Vote is passed.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then something new. We'll let our city manager talk about it.
Oh, yeah, okay. So this is new. So probably about six weeks ago or so, I was approached by Jeff Kincart and my first, the city manager of Bartow. And Jeff had come up with an idea. Those of you that are older, who are probably familiar with Route 66, it runs from Chicago out to California, which is the, uh, it's gone now. It's the, uh, on the Great American Highway, runs through, well, before the interstates were there. Runs through, that was a TV show, it's gone. Runs through a lot of small towns, very scenic road, and if the South people used to go out west many years ago. And so there's a, um. Talk, there's a lot of scenic highways are designated in the state of Florida. So there is, um, talk of making Route 60, which is the only, I guess. So they say the only road that goes from one coast to the other in Florida, getting a designation of scenic highway from the east coast to the west coast, getting scenic highway designation for that. And really touting this up is a big deal. So the Route 60 right now, State Route 60, and getting that designation and forming a committee. I had spoken to Commissioner Harrison about this, because she's not on another committee, not serving on this committee, uh, when the time comes to have somebody on this committee, which is very shortly. She did agree, so it'll be a matter of, you know, months. So I do have a couple of things to hand out. There's actually a PowerPoint, and I'm gonna have those folks come. They were Bartow's city commissioner last night. It was Jeff Kincart, or Keon, from the Mystery Center over there in Bartow. They came and did a presentation. I do have a copy of the movie that the Mystery Center did put together, uh, which I'll play, and I'll give you a copy of the PowerPoint, which we won't play, but you can take it home and, you know, whatever you want with it.
Jeff Kincart being Representative Kincart's husband?
Father, and father.
Father.
And so I'll give you a copy of this, and you can do whatever you want with it. Just pass this one. So Jeff is the spearhead of this. He's actually, has a song, and he's written, we don't know, I got the song. So, um. But this is a movie that they put together so far. Mulberry's pretty well represented, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna focus on. So anyway, I'm done with them, and then Gene and I went over there for a larger presentation with DOT and the sports tourism folks over there and so on. And so it started to gel now. We're putting a letter, a pen together, and some letters to support the cities. And so it started to gel a little bit, and Jeff is gonna drive it. But it's gonna be focused on Polk County, because we're right at the center of this. And then, of course, there's the counties that are out on the shoreline, and then there's like that whole dead Evo Junction area out there, the Luffing. So they're really focusing on putting this Polk County area together. DOT has spoken to all five districts, and they feel that Polk County should be the driver of this, because this is where the historic areas are. So we're gonna do the scenic highway designation of this. And you'll see that there's quite a bit in here that, that. We'll, we'll kind of let the video sort of speak for itself. It'll be kind of, it's like seven and a half minutes.
Citizens, as of 2023, 27 highways across the state have been formally designated, recognizing their scenic, archaeological.
Well, we're in. Yeah, we don't have the world's greatest white flag, but that's next to it.
Connecting beaches to skyscrapers and big cities to pasturelands and agriculture.
Idea of the moment, you could see the sunrise on Polk County, the sunset.
The road connects the rich communities and light whales to the archaeologically divorced Bone Valley. State Route 60 connects travelers through a growing number of cultural experience.
Maybe that would come. I don't mind if it sentences the whole Bartow part.
There's Chelsea.
Be rolling fingers.
Publication of artifact magazine by the Polk Arts and Cultural Alliance. In addition to year-round destinations, communities along the route host one of the highest-sea festivals, basically the Florida High Wheeler's Engine and Tractor Show, light whales.
Is there a way you can email us those videos, so we can watch it, not buffer it?
Each community also hosts celebrations during the holidays, including the Halloween parade and Carnival of Bartow, the Christmas Village in Mulberry, Easter, Sunlands, and Montauer, and Mary Hall Park, and perhaps the wackiest Florida parade tradition, Bartow's Unbreak. State Route 60 is rich in old Florida history. Approaching from the east, the road brings travelers across the historic Cassin River and into pasturelands that have long served as a.
Bartow's in your lot?
Bartow's in your lot?
Is it talking about? I think it's three there. I'm meeting there, so they didn't make the video. I don't know if this clip flew as. We'll send it south.
County has been committed to the preservation of environmental lanes, authoring visitors and residents alike an opportunity to enjoy historic natural landscapes. State Route sixty connects travelers with a multitude of county and city sign.
The good thing is that everybody complained about the song that watches this from home, so they'll just assume that this is the problem. Wanna hear the song written? Yeah, the song's not on the videos. Oh, okay. It was written by, um, Jeff's son. And then they did some AI fingers, something just singing it, it's actually really good. All very touching.
And we're good?
That's it. Yeah, all very.
About to be bowled over now.
So anyway, I'm gonna see if they can come out and do a, a little speech on it, but Jeff was up there talking last night, and it was forty-five minute presentation. Basically, the video and just sort of the steps which are named in this PowerPoint, which sort of letter and step. Did the DOT guy go up there and talk about what he needed to do and so on, so, um. He's exciting, he's watching this video.
Oh, that pulled caught my eye. I wonder where that is, it was like a spa.
You don't watch the screen.
A straight song, oh, that's always.
Anyway, it was great. It started out with all very address, that is a four B address, and then they got to seven B, so it's a little bit.
I have kids that used to live down in my, and they're address. They have three different, some came out of Lowbury, some came out of four B, some came out of Oldbury, that they have. What I call it, it's on Bill Prusher they live, and that's where the Chunes lived. And I always call that Chune's building. But they're kids.
So anyway, that's just kinda what's going on, I didn't want you guys to hear about it somewhere else, they kinda were keeping it hush hush for a little while. I'm not sure. It just wanted to get a sort of package of things together, present all at once, so yesterday they dropped it out. I, I wanted you guys to see if it's decent for sound. So there it is, um. And we were actually just talking today, I'm trying to probe the internet and hear stuff, it'll be up there in a second.
I just hear everyone, anyway, so it's good for me. It's a rough idea, but quite often.
Bartow property can bring in time and.
How do they choose the places that's been included?
Just randomly, they kinda have an idea of what's, whatever, it'll be, you know, we'll get into it when the time comes.
I know it's a few that we're definitely missing.
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not carved in stone, this is just a presentation, give the body of everybody, so I guess it's more like, um, you know.
Well, maybe we need to create a presentation and send to Tallahassee to shield the CRX from being attacked next year.
Wouldn't that be nice? But it's a, like I said, Jeff Kincart, he's already formed a five oh one C three. Wouldn't count it already and, um, so we'll probably draft whatever, um, support from the city. Perhaps everybody signed, I'm not sure exactly what they're asking for, but we'll put something together, we'll have some.
Back in my hotel days, I had to put together some little thing like that, and then finally get out and guess, places to do, things to see.
So, anyway, just gives you an idea of what's coming, so that's a, it's an exciting time.
Yeah, it's exciting, thank you, thank you.
I'm excited about that. Try to get purpose to kind of take part in it, good job, thank you for volunteering to do that for it.
We're gonna move on to city commission comments. Neil, you're up first.
I'm up first.
Okay. Well, I'll echo the comments from Chelsea about Little Mermaid, went there. I tried to buy the tickets like the week of the opening. Well, I'm like, well, can't do that day, can't do that day, they're all sold out. So I wound up actually getting the last show Sunday, rock dead center, front row in the middle. Those kids were quite talented, I'm like, wow. Shark trivia, enjoyed that, was fourth place, I tried the third, but that's all right. Attended the ribbon cutting at the depot brewery, always support them up as much as I can. Back to school bash is this coming Saturday. We did the stuff the truck, Community Services Center, um, Saturday and Sunday, I was there Sunday. And the superintendent of the school system showed up and put about three or four bags of school supplies in there. And I don't think he was recognized after he left, I said, that was superintendent, oh, really? I said, yeah, really? And I invited them to the event Saturday at Lowry High School, hopefully they'll show up. Probably able to tell.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Young, who are you that you invited? Oh, it'll be all right. And that's pretty much it that I have written down.
Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight.
Goodness, man. Put Mark on the wall. Mr. Masadi?
Oh, I have a few things. I'll make up for them.
Okay.
Um, first, when it comes to live and drink, I have to tell you, I, I've been a donor since my first license at sixteen. Much to my mother's distress, okay, um, but when I explained to her why and how it could help people, save people. And then we had a close family friend who needed a transplant, she became a donor some years ago. She's ninety-three now, so I don't think they want her organs, but it was something that was a really stellar point in our, in our family. Um, other thing, I'm gonna jump on Neil's thing about the bash. They still need volunteers, um, my last talk with them was they could use all the help they can get. And it runs between ten to level two, two, but they, people will start being in lines, I'm sure, by ten o'clock. If any face painters are out there, they could use a few of those too. Um, I was just skipping back and forth through things and that was, that was the things that always caught my, my eye here. That's it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, um, I was listening to the reports this evening and, um, Bethany at the library and Chelsea with the cultural center and museum and gent theater, and I am so in awe of how creative that all of the employees that are under Laura and Chelsea, of how they come up with all of these things, um, art things and things to make, I'm just like, it is, it is so awesome. How they can just be so creative and Chelsea and Laura are too. And, um, I do want to introduce somebody tonight that's here and this is the, and this was a plan. But this is our new commander at the American Legion, Randy Abels.
All very serious.
So I just saw him and wanted to introduce him. And congrats to Mayor Hatch and Tom McFaney for your reappointments. And I'm also looking forward to this committee that I'm gonna be serving on, I hope, for the Florida scenic highway program. And that's all I have to say.
Hopefully your committee won't be as controversial as ER that you said.
Hopefully not as controversial this month.
Mr. Smith, what's up?
Matt Nice. I apologize for missing the ceremony. Very old, I, I didn't wanna be there. I know the content was, um, in culture, but I know, um, certainly they create. But, uh, this is some of my old students, I forgot to mention this, thirty-five years, they had a reunion. They had a reunion this past weekend, and so I had missed the ordeal that the new business, because I, I really wanted to be there, but I wanted to see if I could I don't know if the owner was there, but I wanted to see if I could give them a, take out a sponsorship or not a football. That was, that was amazing, but anyway.
He's still on his coach.
Uh, I miss, I miss both of us. So maybe the city manager can tell me who that guy is and I'll give him, I'll give him a new job, talk to him.
Well, good luck, we're gonna end up paying for it, it's our money, so.
Yeah, it's money.
City money, so. Should be best to go to the restaurants individually, because they don't give you some money.
Yeah, especially if you go.
Yeah, because the, if you go to the depot, that's, we own it, so it's just gonna be taking money away from the city.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I get from the city.
Better get, you're gonna learn very quick, that's all they do.
But anyway, but anyway, I probably just passed it. But that's where I was, now I'm trying to tell you more really sad than I told. Um, I don't know if you remember the Morrison girls. I don't know what some of the kids I.
Good.
Anyway, that's all I.
Thanks, sir. Uh, and it falls to me, uh, on a sad note, Marlberry lost one of its longtime citizens this week, uh, Richard Staley. Uh, he's been in November, I said, uh, really sad, uh, and his funeral will be Friday. Six, uh, nothing about that, good regular stuff. Somebody tonight mentioned, talking about hurricanes, I think it was Mr. Julie, talking about shelters. Several of our schools open up for shelters, uh, when a hurricane is here. And, uh, but if you are of the type where you need a special needs shelter, you have to apply for those ahead of time. So, and I'm not sure that I know where to tell you to look, but, uh, you do need to apply for those special needs shelters ahead of time. And also shelters that take pets are few and far between. Not all shelters take pets, so if you have a pet that you want to take with you to a shelter, you need to check to see which shelters will accept pets. Because I know when I did, when I was a shelter manager at the high school, the high school did not accept pets. So if somebody had a pet, I'm sorry, they either couldn't come in or they had to leave that outside. And that's, I, it's, I hate to be that hard to know about it, but that's just the way it is. And you can either handle pets or you can't.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I will? Yes, when you were speaking of that, I went to Google box.
Okay.
And they can register on the polkcounty.net public safety emergency. But for those who don't have access, it's a whole lot simpler to call, eight six three two nine eight seven zero two seven.
Thank you.
Eight six three two nine eight seven zero two seven.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, and, and I don't know that the city, I don't think the city can do anything about this, but, uh, I've been in my yard, like, not me personally, my yard has been attacked by hogs again. And, uh, I fenced my backyard, so they just got in another part of my yard. But, but anyway. They, they look, well, you laugh, it looks like the yard's been plowed and not digged. And, uh, they got my daughter's yard, which is right over there near where the.
Got there too.
Yeah, city manager lives, so, uh, anyway. But anyway, uh, back to school bash, I wanna, you know, thank everybody that has volunteered and is volunteering. I know my wife was down there Saturday and she looked, she said, I need to see Neil, but I didn't see you.
Working overtime, I'd say.
Anyway, and I'm excited, Chelsea, for the three festivals that are coming up. And I'm, I'm excited that you're, you're already getting vendors applying and that just makes my day. Also.
Is that a smile or is that mean on your face?
It's both, I echo all of it.
I'm sure it's a.
Online payments, man.
I'm sure it's a little, but, um, but just to let you, the public, know before we have another meeting again, uh, many of your elected officials and I don't know if Rick's going around will be attending the Florida League of Cities. Florida League of Cities convention is a convention, it will be in Orlando this year. And it's a place for all the representatives from all four hundred and eleven municipalities in the state of Florida. That's how many there are, believe it or not, they go and we see, we take workshops on various sundry things that affect you day to day, that affects us day to day. And, uh, it's a good time to have fellowship with other commissioners and mayors and stuff like that from other city managers from other cities to see what they're doing and best practices and just a lot of different things. And, uh, that convention alternates between Orlando and Miami, one year here, one year there. And, uh, we'll be going to that next week.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
No, this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, next Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And, and I wanna thank the city for letting us go and paying our way and yada, 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 all of that. And that's all I have, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Before we get to the city manager?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna ask someone in the city, it's a lady that works down at the, uh, what's that place down there?
Diamond Bridge.
Yeah, her husband does that kind of thing.
Her husband does what?
That type of thing that you're talking about.
Oh, he traps dogs?
Information. Yeah, give, give him, he knows, he knows.
Well, I haven't seen him, seen him in a week now, but they were bad there for a couple days. Thank you. It's all your fault, man.
Thanks. Uh, a couple things. Um, we were the manager of depot three oh three, uh, for about an hour and a half, two hours, one day last week along the list of things that we went over. Uh, one of the things I, I have to be careful of is we do pay him to manage the place. So I have to be careful of, you know, micromanaging. I can't get involved in day-to-day stuff, you know? We do pay him to run the place. Uh, he does keep me informed most of the time of what's going on. You know, when he's bringing in a different vendor or whatever. Uh, we do have discussions about the hours and the things coming in, but I'm, you know, I've said many times in the restaurant business, we do pay him. He is a person of restaurant steward. We do pay him to do that. But I can't run the city and set the restaurants on top of it. So I'm, I'm relying on him to do that. Now, there are things that you and other folks have come to me about that I have talked to him about, like, for instance, the music was a little too loud. So I've talked about that, it's lower than volume recently. Uh, I've noticed the difference. Next couple of times you go in there, you probably will notice a difference on that. Uh, we've talked about the hours, you know, so the hours have decreased and that was one of the things that it really wasn't worth it until they began to have the grand opening. They've done more advertising now that the grand opening is taking place. The sixth business hopes to be open tomorrow. I was in there today. They said they're keeping their fingers crossed, um, to be open tomorrow, but assuming that means not tomorrow, the next day. Um, yeah, you know, cooking something in there today, some kind of pork. I did get a sample of it. I think it's pork. A big long piece of meat skewered, I think human leg, probably. It was good, though. Anyway, uh, so, uh, you know, we did go over a few things. There's still some tweaking to go on. I met with Jason Rodd over there today. There's a couple of things, find a little punch those things, very few. Uh, you know, soap dispensers in the city, for instance, or something, not pumping properly. There's a couple of minor things. Uh, but all in all, I think I, I wasn't able to go to the opening. Uh, he's in the process of joining the chamber. He hasn't done that already. The chamber would have a ribbon cutting in the summer, they have that dormant during the summer. So it should be something, hopefully, this fall, an actual official ribbon cutting that, you know, will all be invited to. I don't know when that'll be, September, I'm not sure. The, uh, I'm looking at the numbers. The numbers are beginning to look up for the restaurants. If they do a mailing, uh, the attendance is starting to look up, I think with four hours or more about. Uh, they advertised outside of Mulberry, which makes more sense because people in Mulberry know it's there. They drive by it all the time. One of the issues that we had was with the laundromat there in various states of disassembly and assembly. People loved that. It was depot three oh three a lot of times. They thought it was under construction all this time. That threw people off a little bit. Uh, but it is starting to pick up. There's a lot more out-of-town people coming in, so. And hopefully by tomorrow, there'll be six places. And they were negotiating for about the twelfth time with someone going to the seventh place. That. If this place comes in, they're just, you know, they're like, percentage they have to pay. If they, you know, if they increment it, it will be, you know, hopefully in four to six weeks. But I don't even wanna say who it is because, you know, if I say it, it turns out I'm the person, so. Um, but that'll be up and running. Uh, we, we talked about having, you know, regular trivia and their regular depot and their regular events in there and so on. Now that that, that room is open. So, you know, we're working on things. Um, that we did see signs out there, put some off-site signs on thirty-seven and sixty pointing to the location. So, uh, we're working on getting some, uh, we're supposed to have it actually, I think, yesterday or something, get some actual designs in on those. So, uh, not there yet. I think I spoke to most of the folks here about the, uh, during the CRA meeting about getting a generator on site to, uh, hopefully, uh, initially, the initial idea was to protect the, the food in the coolers, freezers, whatever, in case of a power outage. But then we decided possibly ramp that up for AC work and lighting in case there's sustained power outage. The folks in town would have a place to go if they lost power at their homes. They could go get a meal and get cool weather and so on. We're just trying to figure out how to get the best bang for our buck there without, possibly without doing the whole place because the cost could be exorbitant. So we're trying to figure out how much money we have for that. Anyway, so we're working on that. Shift gears here. As you know, I think we said we, I, I think the finance director said earlier in the first meeting, we're working on the CRA budget. We are working on the city budget. Um, we've met on that several times. We'll be bringing that to you and adding workshops over the next month or so. Um, that's going along well. Um, as you know, we sent out the initial trim notice, which we didn't raise the taxes. On the initial trim notice, you know, of course, you can set it higher than lower, you know, maybe a little supplement wiggle room, but we still need to do that. Um, piggyback, piggybacking on what Rosa said about the amount of work that, you know, the cultural center and museum and Studio Thirty-Seven and the library does and those programs. And that's a big reason why they come up here and they take their time and they do present to everybody every single meeting is because, especially now during the budget sessions, but all year round, they come up here and public works and utilities and all the departments come up here is to show you what you got as, and actually the folks that are watching, um, on Facebook and YouTube, when we get that back up and running, to show everybody what they're paying for and what's going on in the city and how hard everybody works. And it's important that, um, that they know what's available for them and the bang they're getting for their buck here. And, um, and, you know, people talk about the Mulberry miracle and some of the people, and Drew will tell you because he hosts all these other cities, the things that are going on in this city that aren't taking place in cities that are a lot larger than this city, let alone cities that are this size. So it's something to really be proud of. It's something you guys can hang your head on as elected officials. But also the people that are performing this work, you know, they, this is something you won't see everywhere else. So it's important. And that's why I like to have this stuff at the beginning of the meetings so that people are here and leave for whatever reason. We have people that come in, like Johnny Carter might come in like he did today and then later, of course, he was here for the CRA meeting. But he might come in and leave and not, he might miss this if he comes in and we could just like the end, that's why we put it in today. And Mayor, I thought about this ten years ago, putting this stuff at the beginning of the meeting. So that everybody can experience this. People that come at me, the Boy Scouts come in or the baseball team or somebody comes in. Teachers come in sometimes for whatever reason.
Can't be this serious, man.
Yeah, they come in and they leave, you know. Um, anyway. Um, another thing. Um, so I know that, um, we have two commissioners here. I know Commissioner Barsati is on the Water Cooperative. And Commissioner McDonald is on the TPO. I, I know that you had a meeting recently. Have you had a TPO meeting yet? Okay, so I don't know that you guys have done any reports from the meetings. But I know that the, I haven't seen any. Nothing comes back to me usually from the TPO meetings, but the, the regional water cooperative, uh, stuff, I do get reports usually and it's from those meetings. But one of the things I did wanna put out to you guys was, um, I did get the slideshow from the meeting. Not that really bad, it's a meeting that happened the other night. I didn't forward that, but skip over that. But I did wanna pass this out to everybody. This is just the, um, let me just say this first. Um, I don't wanna talk about water, just to be, I know we do. Um, if you recall, um, the thing about the water permits with my potentially, um, cutting permits December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, whether to do or don't, it's still all up in the air. Nobody knows. However, um, one of the things they've said is they wouldn't do that unless there was a demonstrated harm to the environment. And Drew was on the legal team that was involved in that lawsuit. And that was sort of this weird little loophole that was left at the end of that settlement. And in their, um, PowerPoint slideshow thing that they put out, a hundred and nine pages the other day, I'm gonna hand this out. It does say, here, PowerPoint, this is the way I interpret this, and I'll hand this out to you. It does say, CFWI will restricts traditional use at the top. And then it says, traditional water sources are now restricted based on environmental department concerns. And I'm gonna hand this out to everybody. That sounds to me like they have restricted it already.
They're not calling that one out in the last meeting.
So, uh, I just want you to see that because I know you all don't get these things all the time. I know that we have two commissioners that did attend the meeting. Everybody.
I'm ready. I have a second question.
So I, I don't, I'm not saying what they're gonna do, but I'm just saying that's what they, that's their, that's their handout. So, anyway. Met with Representative, the Director, the Regional Director of the Red Cross today. Um, one of the things that she wants to do is she wants to, I'm switching gears by the way. One of the things she wants to do is she wants to make available, and Jamie is our, is our, um, not only the Assistant City Manager, but also the HR Director. She does handle a lot of our training. Um, we're going to, uh, make available through the Red Cross, uh, some hurricane preparedness stuff with the Red Cross to the public and our civic center. Uh, we hope we get that stuff up and running. It's, we're a little late in the game because they've been very tied up in the other counties. This is our first opportunity to happen, come to Mulberry. Uh, she seems to think she can get this thing up and going, I mean, if this is directed, quickly, and we'll get that out and advertised and as soon as we can at the civic center. Um, and also make available resources for everybody. And, uh, also potentially some citizen CPR classes, if we could possibly, uh, maybe steer them into the, uh, community centers within the senior parks, you can have the community centers and also maybe something locally. I'm not sure what we can do there. Uh, but they're all free, so figure that out, Peter. As the availability of the civic center, it's not always available. A lot of weddings, because our, our rates are pretty low, so they're not, it's not really that available. We might be able to do some stuff, maybe Studio Thirty-Seven, there's a lot of limited space, limited availability, because we are filling up the classes. But we'll coordinate that and if that's up to you, we can spread that until you're close as best we can. Um, I had something else. Also, and Drew, I think is gonna talk a little bit about this, but the, um, I know you possibly have been getting some complaints. I've gotten some phone calls, I think, from a couple of you about that, uh, that common parking lot downtown, because it looks like the dark side of the moon over there, because the grass is getting longer. We have an active code enforcement case there, uh, with the owners, as best we know, of record. Uh, but now we're chasing it down. We're not certain. Uh, I'm sure Drew has done a deeper dive into that. Uh, it's not city property. Wish it was city property. It would be sparkling clean. We would do some improvements in there. And we know it's right downtown where we've been trying to clean up and so on. Um, chasing that down, our code enforcement officer's been on top of it. What I did was, um, she had drafted a, uh, and of course, this comes up with other things with code enforcement. When periodically questions come up about, oh, there's a house near me or there's a business near me or there's whatever. Uh, often this grass is so high or often they have a, an old broken-down car in front of the house. And you have to, you know, body, for sure. We have, it's a procedure. It's a long procedure because you have to wait for the grass to get so high. And then she has to cite them. She has to give them ten days to come into compliance. And if not, then she has to order them to go before the magistrate. If the magistrate harrises them for three weeks and the grass is that much higher, then, then the magistrate has to allow them to come into compliance. And then if they have, you know, they may or may not know their grass. So it takes forever. It might be, the grass might be a month and a half before they cut it, if they cut it at all. So, what I've done is I've basically just made you guys copies of this. There's a flow chart in here that she's put together so you can all have it. You can review it. So when you start getting phone calls or if you have questions, you won't have to wonder if somebody's just not doing their job or if I just like the looking long grass or a code enforcement officer wants to fantasize about living on a Serengeti or something. Uh, you can instead realize that it is a process and these things do take some time. And that's what's going on downtown. I know that the owner of a business is down there. It's probably costing every single one of you. You can complain about it. So, now you're hearing about it. So this is what the process is and.
What, what about sleeping, sleeping out?
The homeless folks that are down there, it's private property. They, for all we know, they have permission to let them sleep out down there.
I think that's a seven.
Definitely. It's, uh, I think, really, they shouldn't be out there. But, you know, we think they're kinda, we think they're discouraging them from being down here. Maybe the best they can, but it's like if you had somebody sleeping in your yard. Whatever. Uh, we're, we're working on it. We're doing the best we can.
Don't you?
The only complaint either on the day of the grand opening is with, uh, the trash that was around the town. Who, who's responsible for that?
Well, the, the property itself, again, it falls into this, but what's happened is the trash is starting to come out into the road. It's blowing out of the thing itself.
And that's what it looked like, uh, Sam was starting to move the cars.
So, and on, and the trash that's going around the depot three oh three itself is orders that are hired there should be picked up. It's personal. That's a, that's a complicated situation.
Nobody wants to see that coming out of the restaurant second day morning.
No. Anyway. That's where, and I know Drew's gonna talk about this, so I just wanted to, he's been working on this.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, for a couple of years, but I mean, he's been working, he's been doing a deep dive into this now lately.
Yeah.
I think he's making some, some serious progress.
Hope, hoping, yeah, no, and I'll definitely walk through the issues, yeah.
And that's really, I think, all I, probably.
Great.
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to City Attorney.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. So I did bring the presentation tonight. I'll walk through it in a few minutes, but, um, just over the last couple of weeks since we last met, I did, was able to attend the, uh, Environmental Permitting Summer School.
I did, was able to attend the Environmental Permitting Summer School Conference, which is a, the Water Conference they call it every year, it's great, actually, and I'll talk about water in a minute. But the, we also attended the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association meeting, and that meeting is really lovely, because we, we gather as a group of municipal attorneys, and we fill up a full ballroom, full municipal lawyers, and talk about how municipal, what blows them, but you know, there's four hundred of these families in Florida. And so, the, the whole entire group, my colleagues, I get together, we talk about legislation, we talk about what happens, and we talk about what's next for cities, and so the start of the presentation tonight is really on that. If you wouldn't mind, next slide please, man, thank you. So, I'm gonna walk you through a little bit of the legislative update, and this is kind of targeted for everybody. These are the bills that require us to take actions. There, I have a very large summary that was put together by the, by Rebecca O'Hara, one of the lobbyists for the, for the Florida League. She's also one of the main attorneys there, and I can circulate that to anyone who's interested. This, this is really just a key focus component on what we need to do. So, the first one, y'all heard me talk about Senate Bill seventy four, this deals with platting. We're going to need to pass some kind of resolution and adopt some kind of ordinance change to our land development code to change over platting from review by the city commission to review by administrative body. And more than likely that's gonna end up being the city manager, who will probably in turn appoint your planning manager to sign these plats. Bottom line answer for you guys is you won't see plats anymore, but the good thing is, is that hopefully will, will make things expedient, run through the process, because once, once they've gone through the conceptual process, the normal planning, horizontal construction, the rest is just plugging the pieces in and making sure it all fits, and then we're off to go report, and then they can start selling lots. So, that's the idea there, this bill snuck up on us, it's effective July one, it was signed maybe three business days before July one. So, but, but we are working on that, I know the county and Lakeland have both adopted policies by resolution. I have one drafted for you, I expect to have that for you at your next meeting. As long as there aren't comments from Ron, we're, we're, we're all happy, so, next topic, and thanks. So the next bill, it doesn't really relate to you, it's worth, it's important that you know about it. It's House Bill five oh one dealing with fire prevention. You might think, wait, wait a minute, don't we have the whole county fire rescue here, we do. But our building department though, when it receives permits for alarm systems, there's a, there's a policy that we're gonna have to generate, requiring our building folks to send those over, essentially issue the permit within forty-eight hours of receipt of an application, and make sure that PCFR gets those, because the, if, if not, then there's potential for reduction in the amount of the fees taken, and on all kinds of things. So, this is really important for our fire departments, we've had a conversation already with Winter Haven. Winter Haven, Winter Haven's building official, as many of you know, serves also as Mulberry's building official. So we're hoping that that's gonna carry forward, and, and work the process out for those folks, the PCFR. But this is just a kind of a heads up to y'all, we may have to adopt a policy by resolution, and we may have to have an ordinance, I'm not sure yet. But that's something that, that takes effect now, actually, but the policy has to be adopted before October one of twenty twenty five. You'll most likely see something like this toward the end of September, if we have to do something for. Next slide please. So, Senate Bill nine fifty four, dealing with certified recovery residences, this is a South Florida thing, but it's now become a state of Florida thing. So this requires all of our cities here, Mulberry included, to adopt an ordinance establishing procedures and standards for review and action applications for certified recovery residences. We have to have the ordinance enacted by October one, twenty twenty six. So let's do the math on that, that means first reading's gonna have to happen September at the latest. Second reading's gonna have to happen September at the latest, so we have about twenty days to get this ordinance made. Oh, two twenty-six, not twenty-five, right, my fault. I'm already, I'm already in twenty-six, my head, yeah, no, by next year. And what I, what I, what I, what I hope, what I hope to see, thank you for that, and I remember now part of the conversation we had. What we're hoping with this is we'll see a model ordinance come out of Tallahassee on that one, but it's, it's just, we're gonna have to figure that out. I, I don't know many of our cities that deal with this issue.
What's your case, all it is, a certified recovery residence?
I think it is exactly what you think it is, it is a recovery residence of some sort of type, some sort of fashion. Yeah, yeah, that's right, all of that. So, we will work through those issues, and I'll start, and I'll have that, and thank you for reminding me that next year, I appreciate that. I'm the best clock on my own, on everyone's life by a year. Senate Bill nine thirteen dealing with condominiums, so I don't know how many condominiums we have in Mulberry, but this bill is obviously focused on the coast, not necessarily on inland communities, although in some of our larger cities there are condos and cooperatives. But this deals with milestone inspections, phase two milestone, milestone inspection reports. And we, what it essentially requires is that any agency is responsible for generating one of those reports, report those items to the DBPR on an annual basis, beginning twelve thirty-one of twenty-five. We have to adopt an ordinance requiring that, what that ordinance looks like, I don't know. So we'll have to see what, what folks come up with on that one, it may just be as simple as what you see up there on the screen. I, I don't anticipate that there's going to be much here, but hey, guess what? Tallahassee says you have to adopt an ordinance, so congratulations, you have another ordinance you have to adopt, so. Yeah, and you know, I feel really bad for folks in South Florida, there was an article published in the Tampa Bay Times, I don't know if you saw, dealing with the cost of living in South Florida, and how much it's increased thanks to these mandatory inspections, and special assessments on condominiums are outrageous down in South, I feel bad for folks. But that's, that's kind of what happens after you have an incident like suicide.
They also, there were three stories over here.
Yes.
But they were, they were counting the third story as, if the bottom was a garage, that counted as one floor.
Yes.
Did they correct it that, I can't remember.
I hope so, I hope so, yeah.
Because we have to do it.
We'll work, we'll, we'll take a deeper dive into it as we get closer to that date, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and it's on your radar for action. Let's take a look at the next one, so, next is Senate Bill seventeen thirty, dealing with affordable housing. It's not really mentioned up there, but this is the Live Local Act, Part Three, so this is our second revision to Live Local. The Live Local Act contains now a attorney's fee clause, so if we violate Live Local, and somebody sues the city, there's a prevailing party attorney's fee clause of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's something just to keep in mind. But the, the mandatory thing that we have to do is beginning November one of twenty-six, not twenty-five. Cities have to start providing an annual report to the DEO, which is now Commerce, that includes specified information related to Live Local Act projects. So, Commerce is gonna require a report, that's really something that your staff has to do, just want to make sure you're aware of it. All right, next slide please. So, Senate Bill ten eighty, dealing with local government land development regulations. This looks on its face to be simple, it's really a little bit more complicated. The action item that you have to be concerned about is effective ten one of this year. You have to start specifying in writing what information is required for your various different development order applications. The real component of this bill though, deals with impact fees. And so for cities like Mulberry that haven't raised their impact fees, or readjusted their impact fees in a long time, you're probably gonna be prohibited from bringing them up to current standard, you're gonna have to increase them in small chunks, and you'll have to spread that out over a period of years. So, that, that's a, that's kind of a, that's the big stick component of ten eighty, is really the impact fee issue. We're working on that in a couple of different cities, I, I don't know if y'all had impact fees on the horizon here to increase them, but more than likely what we're gonna look at is, if impact fees go up, we're gonna have to do that in small percentages over a number of years, and it's gonna require a number of different consultant reports to make that happen. So, law just got more expensive, right?
Effective October one, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, 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 that's correct. Okay, so the, the big whammy this year was Senate Bill one eighty, dealing with emergencies, and I've got several slides on this. So effective from becoming a law, in addition to the prohibition on adopting more burdensome or restrictive ordinances, which, let me stop right there. There, there's a map you'll see that shows kind of a hundred miles from Polk County, what that looks like. But Section twenty-eight of this bill essentially has rewound the clock on development codes in Florida back to August one of twenty-four for the entire state of Florida. And it's unheard of, invalidation of home court authority in our current modern era. And so, what that essentially says is if you changed your land development code, you adopted something more burdensome or restrictive without defining what that means, after August one of twenty twenty-four, that's invalid as a matter of law. And so, it gives, really gives developers a head, a tool to use, or if they're, if they feel like they're being, they have something that they may have to pay more money, or they have to do something else to get basic land developed. It's, it's hurting progressive cities, but let me keep going, so there's other things that you have to do too. You also have to coordinate with the water management district to identify critical stormwater infrastructure within our area. We do have a stormwater assessment that we charge on properties, so that's something that we're gonna have to start doing. You have to maintain, excuse me, maintain certain minimum information on municipal websites about emergency preparation response. So, next slide. This is gonna include, or I also have to develop post-storm permitting plan to expedite recovery, rebuilding and updating plan every year. You have to publish on your website a hurricane and tropical storm recovery permitting guide for residential and commercial property owners, so that's a book now that staff has to develop. You have to notify DEM annually of your designated point of contact for emergencies and alternate point of contact. That's not quite as on, on risk, we've had to do that in the past, next slide please. The, the really key factor here is, okay, Polk County, you can kind of see it in the center, right? Whenever a hurricane strikes Florida, if Polk County is listed as part of the disaster area, then it's going to prohibit adoption of more burdensome or restrictive land development regulations if that hurricane is tracked like, with, with, anywhere within a hundred miles, a hundred miles of the county's borders. So if you look at that, that's essentially almost the entire peninsula of Florida. It's a sort of a, sort of a semi-circle that starts around Cedar Key and kind of goes over to just south of St. Augustine. Then down south, it's sort of, it starts just south of Naples, it kind of does another semi-circle up towards, go behind. You know, I think you could draw the map of every hurricane to hit the peninsula.
Throw in the entire shaft.
Yeah, yeah, really. Yeah, it is, and it's just, so, so the point there is that if Polk's gonna be listed as a disaster area, which federal declarations of disasters are more for eligibility for funding and money, you know, chances are Polk will be listed if the governor declares an emergency involving Polk. We would, we'd have to put our land development regulations on pause for as long as the emergency lasts, which, if you haven't been paying attention to emergencies lately, we're still in states of emergency from hurricanes from two years ago. You know, so it, it's a, it's a never ending cycle. It's, it really, it really becomes, we'll never be able to amend our land development code. Let's go to the next slide please. So, I know you can't read that, but this is an email that's been circulated around by attorneys down south that the same lawyers give the Form One lawsuit. And they're putting together a lawsuit to challenge Senate Bill one eighty on single subject grounds because of the, the bill is essentially a log roll, contains so many different things that are unrelated to each other. They feel pretty confident that, that they were able to do one of these lawsuits on single subject grounds in two thousand nine. They feel fairly confident they'd be able to attack one eighty on that. Attorney's fees to participate in a lawsuit are ten thousand dollars per municipal client. It would be five thousand on appeal, if there's appeal, five thousand for another appeal, if it goes to the Supreme Court. You know, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to take a stance one way or the other, I, I'm curious to know how everybody feels as to whether or not you'd be interested in joining a lawsuit of this type. This isn't a decision we have to make today, but I understand that the complaint is probably going to be filed early September. We do know that two of our municipal clients, Winter Haven and Lake Alfred, both petitioned the governor to veto Senate Bill one eighty because of significant changes to the land development code. I think Lakeland has considered joining the lawsuit, but has decided they don't wish to for political reasons. I know, I talked to the Polk County Attorney, I don't know what the county intends to do yet on this. He just returned from vacation, so chances are he hasn't had a chance to speak with his clients or his boards yet. But I want to make sure you were aware of this, that it was out there, and if you wanted to consider that, you know, Mayor, I'm happy to let you all lead the discussion, or lead one if you think, we will have to do that today, we can bring that back in two weeks.
Probably all we can work through.
Yeah, we can walk through that, you know, they were, this is the law firm that was successful in, in having Form One for local municipal officials overturned, or at least enjoined temporarily. So I, I do think that they were able, I, I do believe what they say, if they say they think they can get it ever done, or overturned.
I can't remember, did we join that lawsuit in Form One?
We did not join the Form One lawsuit, right, right, this one would just be in state court in Tallahassee, so. But I do want to make sure you were aware of that, and, and, Chris, if you, if you'd like to have a copy of this, let me know, and I can forward you information about the suit. Yes, please.
Is there, is there something that even about protecting commissioners' address names?
No, as far as public records, I apologize, I'm not aware of that, and we didn't talk about that, but I can certainly find out if there was a bill, or if something that was brought up. You know, we were, we were surprised that the, and it's not in the presentation materials, but we were surprised, for example, that House Bill fourteen forty-five, that's the public officers bill that was adopted by both the House and Senate, that was vetoed by the governor, that was a surprise. We were also surprised that the, that the CRA bill did not come through, right? So, so I know there's several different things that could potentially impact cities and our officers. You, why, why don't we talk about that offline, I can give you more information.
Was that part of the Senate Bill one eighty?
No, no, that was not, no.
I didn't think so.
What it, what it is supposed to do with emergencies, but again, it has a statewide ban on land development regulations, so those two ideas are difficult to cross with each other. That's all I have for the legislative update, if we can transition to the next slide, I'll, I'll turn, I'll turn it over to the Badcock Park issue, so. Let's all take our legislative hats off for a second and think about downtown. So the, the parking lot between Depot three oh three and Jim Theater is, it's highlighted for in blue in the picture. It's often, it's often called the Badcock Park, right? And the reason is because of the wooded area there in the middle, it's, it's a wonderful gathering place for citizens, and, and it's just a neat place here in Mulberry, it's a very special place in Mulberry. On paper, it's owned by the WS Badcock Corporation, which is a inactive Florida company. And so, this was deeded to Badcock in nineteen eighty-nine, and I, and it's, I know everybody knows this, but it's worth repeating. Badcock intended on donating this land to the city before the county bankruptcy. This is, this can be substantiated by phone calls to Rick, emails, me, our office, we have been working on this project for over two years. Next slide please, Jen, I may have you bouncing around in a couple of these, so. This is an example for you, because I've gotten some questions about this. This is another property that was recently owned, excuse me, this is another property that was owned in paper by WS Badcock Corporation. There was a deed out of the bankruptcy in February twenty-five by WS Badcock LLC, a successor entity to WS Badcock Corporation. Now, the statutes on corporate, excuse me, corporate conversions say that whenever a company, like an Inc. or a corporation, converts to a limited liability company, right? say that whenever a company like an Inc. or a corporation converts to a limited liability company, right? All of its assets are owned by the LLC. Why am I bringing this up, right? Because there are four properties right now in the Polk County Property Affairs Office that are still owned in paper by W S Badcock Corporation. Our office is legal advice to you and we believe that that's common, commonly held by the folks in the bankruptcy, is that those four pieces of property, even if they're not mentioned in the bankruptcy documents, are still subject to the automatic stay of the bankruptcy and subject to the jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court. And this example deed proves it. Next slide please, man. So this is an email that I wanted to make sure that you were all up to speed, mainly for our, my, our two colleagues here on the left. Not the left, but on my left. That, that, "Back in February of twenty-five, I emailed Derek Taylor, his former vice president for Badcock." This is an email that he sent to me, to Timothy Santo, Mark Pryor, James Porter. They're all Conn's employees in Houston. I think it's important to Mark to point out that Mark Pryor is the general counsel, vice president for Conn's. A person who I have been trying to reach, as well as to Michael Stiles, or Mitchell Stiles, rather, excuse me. And Derek said, "I am no longer employed with Badcock or Conn's as of end of day February eighth, twenty twenty-five. I've done all I can to assist, other than once again, including the names of this email thread, who are those who you should be contacting for permissions and answers." And this was all dealing with, can we still get the land? Can we use the land for prehistoric con? Can we use the land for city events? I think there was a recent inquiry by a Badcock family member. Can we use the land for a Badcock reunion? So Derek noted that these are the folks we should be talking to. We have not heard word one from any of the people on this list about Badcock Park.
And Derek was counsel for Badcock?
No, Derek was the, he was a real estate guy. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, I've been dealing with Elizabeth, Liz Cleveland, Elizabeth Cleveland. She had left the Badcock organization back in November of twenty-four? Yes, it was, it was October or November of twenty-four. We were trying to get secure permission to use Badcock Park for Christmas events and Elizabeth had left. And so it was, it's been very difficult to deal with these folks, so. But I want to make sure you know, we, this is, this is kind of how we, this is what we've been facing with. Next slide please, man.
I don't remember Stiles.
Yeah. So is this document in this, this blow up for a second, what is, what is this, right? On July twenty-one this year, the court in Houston that had jurisdiction over the Conn's bankruptcy entered an order confirming the plan of liquidation, right? So Conn's is going to sell everything to you. In the order, they gave permission for something, and this, the legal term is de minimis, but essentially, in the order, they gave permission to Conn's to conduct one-off real estate transactions as they see fit. And in fact, not, if you wouldn't mind going back to that deed real quick. Yeah, that deed right there. This transaction was one of those one-off real estate transactions, the one in February of twenty-five. So we know that they are doing those transactions and we know that they're doing them in Mulberry. Now, this one was property purchased for eight hundred thousand dollars. It also is property though that's owned industrial liability, has access to State Road sixty. So that, that's a completely different set of circumstances, but let's go back to the slide we were at. Yep, so I, I blow this up, this section up to tell you that we know that they can still do things, right? And, and they still possess all of their real estate. They can deed it out to us if they want to. So let's go to the next slide. So here's what we've done to date to try to get this land for you. We drafted and circulated a land donation agreement. We've worked with Badcock personnel after the bankruptcy filing. We've reached out to National Bankruptcy Council as well as to Conn's General Counsel with no responses. We've contacted local eminent domain counsel, and I'll talk to you guys about that later. New for the last couple of months, we've reached out to a Badcock Corporation family contact. So the gentleman that I mentioned to you that's interested in using the park, we actually called him because we wanted to find out what his thoughts are and who his contacts are inside the organization. We've also reached out directly to the Florida office of the bankruptcy counsel. So that deed that we, that went back on a couple of slides, that had the name of somebody, so I said, "Hello today." I just said, "I need to talk to you." Now unfortunately, they're out of the office, but I'm going to track them down, don't worry. Next slide please, man. Yeah, so here are the things that I think you can do. And this is from our office where we, we think you have these options. We think you can continue pursuit of these one-off transactions. They're called de minimis, but they're one-off sales transactions. And to do that, we're going to have to reach out to Conn or to their bankruptcy attorneys. I know Rick mentioned that he was planning on connecting with Conn's folks and has been working with some of those folks.
Educate me on the term one-off.
Yeah, so, so the, the technical term is de minimis sale, which means of minimal value. You know, Conn's, the Conn's property is worth hundreds of millions of dollars, if not billions, right? And so a de minimis transaction would be something that's small, less than, you know, one, they use the de minimis procedure for an eight hundred thousand dollar piece of property. I don't think, I don't know if we have a real estate appraisal for the parking lot, but it's certainly worth less than that, I would think. Yeah, and so that's certainly small. So a one-off means I'm not buying all of your,
Okay.
all your retail stores, or I'm not buying your giant warehouse, or your, or your, all of your corporate headquarters. No, I, I'm just buying one piece here or there that's too small to make a difference in the bankrupt support and, and who gets the secured holdings, right? So I just was saying one-off because I think it makes it easier to understand, but, but thank you for asking the question. The other, another option you have, do you mind? Oh, that's right, go back. Yeah, it does, okay. Another option you have is to work with third-party interviewers who've successfully done this with Badcock and gotten a property. We know there are a couple of those out there. There's some we don't want to deal with. There's some that we might want to deal with, but people who have successfully gotten property, they might get a little help with. The eminent domain is possible and we've explored that. We've talked with the local eminent domain counsel, who does believe that we should have a public purpose for taking the property. And that, that's a genuine federal taking, where you take somebody's land and say, "This is the government's now." That, if, if you do that, because it's a park and associated parking, that probably satisfies the public purpose doctrine, right? Now, the problem with that is you're going to have to pay for that. You'll have to pay whatever it's valued at and most likely you'll end up paying not only your lawyer's fees, but the owner's lawyer's fees, as well as a higher price than what you think it's worth. So that's a very expensive option. It is permanent though, once you take it, it's done. Now, one thing to consider about eminent domain, that's something that this board's considering or management's considering, whatever the price comes back as far as value, and there's a way to value property. You usually get a couple of appraisals and works of math magic. But whatever that value is, you pay that into the court. So if it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, you pay it into the court. It's gone. You can't pay it over time, you have to pay it all in one fell swoop. So that, that can tie up money for extensive. The, the last and final way, and I know we're kind of doing that right now through code enforcement action, but we can go through extended rounds of code enforcement action in order to try to acquire the property. We've done that successfully with several properties within the city. I will tell you that with bankruptcy, you have to worry about the free and clear sale rule. I know we got into this dispute with a property owner a few years ago, but theoretically speaking, okay, it's post-sale offenses only. Now, not post-bankruptcy, but post-sale. So once the property changes hands to somebody and it's free and clear, then if there's code actions to start at that time, you might be able to use those to, to leverage the property, right? But, and so we don't know when the sale's going to happen. It could happen at any time. I, I don't think it's already happened, I think we would have been made aware of that. You know, I, so I mentioned earlier the attorney that I spoke with, or the attorney that I reached out to today wrote, she's on vacation till August fourteenth. I mentioned, talked to her secretary today though. And I asked her to, please let anybody in the practice group know, I, I'd like to have, talk, speak with somebody about this. So I'm hopeful that we'll reach some kind of contact. I mean, the Florida attorney is probably the best way we have to get into the organization. So hopefully I'll have some news on that. But this is really here for you guys, it's my report to you. I, I don't expect any kind of, I'm not asking for direction today or anything of that nature unless you want to give it to me. I really just want you to know where we stand on it, more so for the new folks, but more so because there's questions being asked. And this, this is something that the community's starting to ask about now that the property's falling into disrepair, now that the lights have been turned off and Tico's shut power out there. It, it's, it's an issue, it's an issue, so.
It seems like the first two were the best options.
Of course, of course, if you can work with people, absolutely. And so, you know, we're, we're definitely pursuing the first one. You know, through, through, through whatever means we have available to us. Okay, yeah, a couple, a couple more things real quick. So just wanted to make you all aware too, water concerns that, you know, our, we had a couple of meetings where we talked about water. I've had new developer attorney contacts since your water meetings. A gentleman named Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver and Miller, representing Victoria by the Lakes Development, has contacted us. So we're going to be reaching out to him on that issue. There's a fellow named Clayton Ricklemeyer with Hillward Henderson in Tampa. If you don't know who his developer client is, he won't tell us. But he actually tried to get in touch with me while I was here earlier. And I was unable to, to talk to him as we were in the middle of the CRA meeting. But I hope to talk to him tomorrow and know what that's all about. Also Ryan Baron, Ryan Baron with Peterson Myers contacted us, seeking documents about Southwest Florida Water Management District. We're, we are working with Peterson and Myers on some other development issues. And so I reached out to Ryan's partner, Bart Allen, was able to have that public records request withdrawn. So, but, you know, all this talk of water is causing lawyers to start paying attention. I just thought you all might want to be aware. The, the other thing too on this, and, and I, you know, I thank Rick for pointing it out to me and I appreciate it, and I appreciate the, the writing in the Mulberry Press. So there was an article in the press that came out about water debate. And I appreciate the words that the author used and said that I was cautiously optimistic, because I am. You know, this, this form that was circulated earlier, oopsie, I'll tell you that I, I disagree with all of it. And, and I'll say that this, this first item, the traditional water sources are now restricted based on environmental harm concerns, they're not, if you read the rule. So that, that's a misstatement of law. The, the projection to need thirty-four million gallons a day, I think I do agree with that, right? But what I'll tell you, this, this slide over here where it says needed water and available water, that's open to scientific debate. And not every scientist that attended the C F W I meeting or talked about the C F W I plan actually agreed that this was the number. And so, you know, for, if Swiftman is going to try to step in and make a modification, they actually have to prove this. And it's not just relying on hearsay, they have to bring evidence. I also, remember I started out by telling you I attended the water conference. So where it says the Polk County A W S options are limited and expensive. It is true, they are expensive, but they're not this expensive. In fact, I've talked to an A W S technology partner of, hopefully a future partner for the city of Winter Haven, one of my clients, who believes that he can create a surface treatment, excuse me, a surface treatment technology for refilling water that will purify it into drinking water for a far, far fewer, small fraction what it would cost for buying a million gallons a day in Southwest Florida. So there are alternatives out there, we are exploring them. I don't agree that they're so, that they're so expensive that you have to go to the, you know, a billion-dollar boondoggle. I think you have options in front of you and, and I know from conversations I've had with management that, you know, we're working on some things in the background. So not all is lost, I still remain cautiously optimistic. That's right, that's right. So that concludes my report.
Sadie Clark?
Oh, I have one other thing, one other thing, I want to make sure, to mention for the record, that we, you know, we did talk about the Depot three oh three modifications alone. And so I want to make sure it's noted on, on the city commission's record too. We received yesterday a term sheet from Citizens Bank that's described out what the Depot three oh three loan terms were going to be. We intend to amend that loan to try to save the city money on legal fees, save the city money on bank fees by, by getting a lower interest rate, but with add principal. And so there, there is an amortization chart that's being floated around on that. We're hopeful the bank will release this new term sheet by either late today or tomorrow. And so we're moving forward on that. We hope that, my, my thought is that this body will take action on the Depot three oh three loan before the end of this fiscal year. That's what we anticipate. So that, I want to make sure that we just had that mentioned for the record. That, that is my report, thank you.
Now, Sadie Clark?
I, I just want to remind everyone, those of you that are attending the conference next week, Deputy City Corps Sandra with Ross will be working on getting your documentation and things together. And so we will reach out to you and manage it for you to pick up before you depart. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to send them in. Yes, I have some concerns about, well, that management as well as Facebook Live. Some may aware that they no longer allow your videos to stay on the page for more than thirty days, that is each of February of this year. Therefore, they are deleting. Now, the city, in order to make sure that we are in compliance with the general schedule, we do have a archiving software that does archive those for us to make sure that we remain in compliance. However, they are not available, of course, for the public that, that may want them. So we are looking into making headway and trying to go back to using our YouTube channel, which is, we are told is a, is better quality anyway, that can then also go over to Facebook and also that it can, people can see it that way. So we are working on that, which is what Rick initially was looking at too, or having lots of issues with our speed, internet speed and stuff like that. But it is something that is in progress. Until we get YouTube up and going, we will be uploading our Facebook Live videos to YouTube until we get completely moved over to YouTube. And that way we can post that video, so we can be accessed from the Facebook page, but it will take everyone to YouTube to, you know, receive a live video stream.
Commissors, anything for the club? One, two times told. Thanks for coming, we stand firm.